Good afternoon and welcome to the Corporation of the Town of Kirkland Lake Meeting of Council held February sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. To start, we'll just have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. We have the approval of the agenda. It was approved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan. That council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of February the sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen as presented. All in favor? Thank you. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest? Undeclared. Petitions and delegations. We have tonight two groups. The first group would be Joanne Drake from the Canadian Blood Services. Welcome to Kirkland Lake, Joanne. It's very nice to have you here, and the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Hey, I guess you can hear me. Thank you very much, Mayor Antonia Assi and the council members for having me here today. It was a pleasant trip. I know hardly any traffic, a lot of wet, but no snow, so. I want to talk to you a little bit today about the community blood donor clinic that we have here in Kirkland Lake. I'll start by telling you a little bit about Canadian Blood Services, because probably a lot of you still think the blood system is managed by Canadian Red Cross. Canadian Blood Services is a not-for-profit charitable organization, and we operate at arms-length from the government. Our mission is to manage the blood supply in a safe manner that gains the trust of all Canadians. Canada has one of the safest blood systems in the world because we take such precautions. We were created in nineteen ninety-eight, and we were the successors of the blood program after the Canadian Red Cross. And I'll forgive you if you didn't know that, because my mother still thinks I work for a Red Cross, so. Just a few facts about donating blood. The criteria for donating, you have to be at least seventeen years of age. It used to be we had an upper age limit of sixty-one for your first-time donation. They've since changed that. There is no upper age limit anymore. So if you've reached the, over the age of sixty-one and you thought it was too late, well, hooray for you, you can donate again. And the criteria changes constantly, so if at one time you were told that you could not donate blood, it might be worth checking again. We have a one triple eight to donate number that you can call twenty-four-seven if you want to call in the middle of the night to see if you're eligible. We have nurses available to take your call. So it might be worth a check if you, if you were told that one time that you couldn't donate. So basically, the criteria is you should feel well the day of your donation. And there are a lot of different variables on whether you can donate or not. So if you have any questions about your eligibility, like I said, I would call the toll-free number. And it's one triple eight to donate. So how much blood do you actually give when you donate? You donate four hundred and fifty-five milliliters of blood, which is about the size of a pop can. Men have six times that amount in their body, and women have five times that amount in their body. So you have a sufficient amount, and you know, like our slogan says, "Blood, it's in you to give." How many, how often can you donate? You can donate every fifty-six days. So every second time that we're in Kirkland Lake, because we do come here every two months, you could conceivably be donating blood. So some of the misconceptions about donating blood, like first of all, the age is probably one, because our criteria changes very frequently. Age used to be a, a reason why people wouldn't donate. I've had people say to me, "I had a tattoo ten years ago." Well, you're eligible to donate. The tattoo, body piercing is, you know, a six-month deferral. Same with if you have a baby, the baby has to be six months old. So we have a criteria manual that is probably about this thick. So I'm not going to go through all the criteria, because first of all, I'm not a nurse. But a lot of people think they are not eligible, when in fact they are. So one in sixty people actually donate blood, or sorry, one in sixty, and one in two are actually eligible. So there's a big gap there. Yet fifty-two percent of us say that we or a family member have needed blood in our lifetime. So you can probably count on that, that you will need a blood transfusion, or somebody in your family, or somebody that you know will need a blood transfusion in your lifetime. So the blood has to come from somewhere, has to come from us. Where does the blood go after you donate? So you probably didn't know that if you had heart surgery, in all likelihood, you probably needed blood. You may not have known it, because you were probably asleep at the time. But it takes five donors to support somebody having heart surgery. A severe car crash could use up to fifty donations. So probably about three-quarters of our clinic here in Kirkland Lake would go to one recipient. If you were receiving cancer treatment, it takes about five donors a week to support somebody in cancer. And somebody who has leukemia, it takes eight donors a week to somebody, to support somebody who has leukemia. So like I said, the list goes on. Those are just a few examples of how, about the need for blood. So although corporate and individual donations are welcome, there is no substitute for human blood. A hundred percent of your donation goes to the patient. So if you look at this chart, it takes us thirteen phone calls to book one appointment. And we've been falling short of our collection target, about twelve units of blood every time we come to Kirkland Lake. So I don't have to tell you that, you probably think, "Well, twelve units, that's pretty close, that's not bad." It isn't bad, but it's not good enough. When you consider that we, our collection staff comes from Sudbury, and so does all the equipment, it takes them two and a half hours to set up the clinic. If we don't collect a target, of course, the cost per unit goes up. So if you take a look around, some of our clinics in the north have been cut. And I really think it's important to keep our clinic in Kirkland Lake. It is a community blood donor clinic, and we need corporations and communities to sponsor and to be part of that, that network of people donating. And every year, keep in mind, we lose about forty percent of our donor base, meaning people are either deferred, maybe they've traveled, maybe they've decided, "I don't want to donate anymore," maybe they got ill. For whatever reason, we're losing about forty percent of our donor base. So that's critical. I was at Kirkland Lake Gold today, pretty well pitching the same idea, and they've been very supportive, so I'm hoping that, you know, we'll get more community support and that our clinics will start to pick up. I think that's about it for that slide. So our next clinics that are coming up, the next one is February the twenty-ninth. And right now, I do have contact within the, the town of Kirkland Lake, and I email posters to that person, and they put them up and forward and on. And I'm just hoping that, you know, a lot of the council members will get involved and maybe, you know, pick up that, that ball and start contacting your friends and family. You may not be able to donate yourself, but think about those, you know, your son, your grandson. It hit close home to me when my mother-in-law needed a blood transfusion once, it started off once a month, and then every, probably every week she passed since, but she needed over two hundred units of blood in her lifetime. And there are so many people in the same situation. So I'll leave it at that. Are there any questions? Yes.
Do people have to pre-register when they show up to the community blood donor clinic?
You don't have to pre-register. We always take walk-ins, but like I said, we're coming from Sudbury, so we started booking appointments, and people were not really happy with that. Some people who are used to just walking in, you can always walk into the clinic, but we do try to take people with appointments first. Because we have to manage our clinic, like I said, if we're coming from Sudbury, we have to collect a target. So if we don't book appointments, then the likelihood of we could come to Kirkland Lake and maybe collect ten units of blood. So we have to make sure that we're well-prepared. Yes. It's not the greatest. I would tell you that across Canada even, the average age of our blood donors between forty-five and fifty-five years old. So I've been to the high schools, and I've been to Northern College. The hours of our clinic right now are from four to eight, so they're not really conducive to, when I started donating, I was working for a company who let us work during, go donate during working hours. And I have to admit, I didn't, I wasn't close to, to this situation, so I didn't know what impact I was making. I was basically going because I was getting an hour off work and I was getting free donuts. So really, it would probably be better if our hours were more conducive to the school, so we could get them in during school. And then if they start, because statistics have shown, if you start donating at a young age, you'll keep donating. A lot of people see it as, see it as their social responsibility, and I think young kids, you just have to show them now, and just getting started is, is the biggest thing. So yeah, youth participation is not the greatest. If you go to the clinic, you'll see a lot of people our age and older. Those are our dedicated donors. Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for having me today, and I will leave the, the list of clinic dates with Joanne, if you don't mind, and I will continue to send posters and whatnot, reminders about the clinic, and hopefully we'll get better support.
Okay, and thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
And the clinic schedule, I think we can get that up on our, on our site.
Oh, that'd be great.
And promote it that way for you.
Yep. Great. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. And have a safe journey home. Okay, our second presentation is from the Injured Workers Group. Larry Quibell and Tracy Fournier are going to be, or is it just Larry? Okay, Larry, the floor is all yours. Just please put your mic on, that's it.
It's on.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, my name's Larry Quibell. I'm here from the Kirkland Lake Injured Workers Group, part of the National Day of Mourning Committee in Kirkland Lake. I'm here to put a presentation forth, questioning town's approval. Thank you for having us. What we're proposing is... Sorry. What we're proposing is, in addition to the current Miners Memorial Site, and Kirkland Lake residents are very proud of Miners Memorial Monument, as they should be. It's one of the very few prominent monuments in Ontario and throughout Canada. It recognizes the mining heritage in Kirkland Lake. And our committee would like to thank the individuals involved in making the monument possible. Our community has a vision that we feel is important, often in communities one, with one prominent industry, other industries are not recognized. We would like to propose to have a monument that recognizes all industry be added to the memorial site. So today, we're asking to propose council of Kirkland Lake approval of a monument. We're looking at trying to build one consisting of rock with a plaque on it. New monument will display the National Day of Mourning as April twenty-eighth, and we'll recognize all industry in our community. Feel free to ask any questions during this presentation if you'd like. The plaque on the monument will read "National Day of Mourning, April twenty-eighth." It'll have the symbol on it that's recognized as part of the National Day of Mourning. It will read "Dedicated with deepest respect to the workers whose lives have been disabled or ended by injury or disease in the workplace in their struggle to support their families and maintain their cultural integrity." The details of the plaque, it'll be a bronze with raised border, eighteen by thirty approximately, Arial font with stipple background in black. We'd like to attach it to a rock, and to attach it, we use hidden fasteners, and by doing that, we drill holes in and we use adhesive, and the plaque stays in place. So it's very versatile. Let's review the location at the monument site. We've had discussions with Nancy Alec and Mark Williams. We conclude that we need to be mindful of what's underneath the monument to avoid moving it. Size and weight, the type of rock, we want to make sure it's got a flat face with smooth edges. The surrounding, we're looking at grass surface, best for maintenance. The area, we've got a photograph of the area. It's got the infrastructure laid out on there, and we're looking where the arrow is on the, on the map. Approximately that area, it's still away from where Microtel goes in. It'll give us some good exposure, and doesn't take away from the current Miners Memorial. There's plenty of room, so we've got, we can pick a good-sized rock to put our plaque in. What we're looking for, we're approaching Alex McIntyre and Associates for a green carbonate rock. Put the plaque on top of that, we could get it. If not, we're looking at the town of Kirkland Lake for donation, and speaking with Mark Williams, he says that there's rock available for us if we need it. And if anybody has any other suggestions, glad to appreciate taking them on. And we hope to have help from the town of Kirkland Lake to transport the rock if we can locate one and put it into place if necessary. We're looking at putting a tree alongside the monument. We'd just like to plant a cedar tree similar to the picture. This type of tree can be trimmed and requires very little care. Does not grow too big, so it'll not take away from the monument or Miners Memorial. In conclusion, finally, we ask town council members to allow us to use Miners Memorial Site to place this monument that will recognize the National Day of Mourning on April twenty-eighth, and all industry in our community. Let's work together to make our community a better place by showing everyone they're, they are an important part of Kirkland Lake, and they're appreciated. Our future plans, once approved from town council, our committee will be sending out requests for donations to help us assist in moving forward. Our target date, of course, is April twenty-eighth. If we're unsuccessful for that date, we're considering June first, which is Injured Workers' Day. We hope to present this in some form at the National Day of Mourning Ceremony that will be held on April twenty-eighth at the Legion, and we're hoping to bring this forward once approved. Thanks again for taking the time to listen, and we appreciate your feedback.
Thank you, Larry. Counselor Morgan.
Thanks very much for, for bringing this to council. I, you know, I can't see anything other than, you know, this is very appropriate and fully supportive of it. I just have, I guess, two questions. One is that out of courtesy, I'm guessing we would have a chat with the people who put up the Miners Memorial to make sure that everything is hunky-dory with them and how it fits into their original plans with the, with the monument. I, I'm guessing that that's...
Did we have that conversation?
I've left a message with the steelworkers, with the United Steelworkers, that was a part of the organizing committee that organized the Miners Memorial. I have left the messages, but I have expressed that to them at our last National Day of Mourning, and they, at that point, had expressed that they were okay with it, but I would like also to have the confirmation.
Yeah, it would be, be good, just for everybody to...
The committee that initially established it no longer exists?
Well, that's right, because it was...
They have to communicate with the steelworkers themselves, because they are also the ones that are maintaining it, as I understand right now, in regards to like the physical part of the, the plaque and stuff.
For sure. But I think, you know, there's probably one or two of the original group that's still in town, and maybe just a, a reach out to them would be appropriate. Anyways, that's, I'm sure you're on the right track. The only other thing I want to mention is, only from experience, the green carbonate rock that you're looking for, you may want to get somebody with some mineralogical background to help you pick out the right specimen, because if it's not the right one, it will corro, like, it will discolor over time, and it'd be a shame if that's not what you have in mind, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Mino.
Larry and Tracy, that's an excellent idea. I, I fully support this, you know, make sure you cover all your bases. My, my concern would be, like, the, the way I'm seeing the picture here, is a rock that's quite low to the ground, so in the wintertime, the, the plaque would not show it very well unless people shovel. So would it not be better to put it on a pedestal or some kind of cement base and then put the rock a little higher for, for the visual side of it? I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, but I mean, the idea is, I fully support this. I'm sure, Mark, if you spoke to him already, the transportation aspect of it is, is not very big for us. He can do that in half a day. So you have my full support.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. What you're representing is extremely important, and I think it will fit well with the Miners Memorial. I do have a resolution, if people are... It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker. That council approves the request for the Injured Workers Group to install a monument at the Miners Memorial Site, recognizing all industry, following consultation with the United Steelworkers. All in favor? It's approved. Thank you very much, Larry.
Thank you.
And thank you, Tracy.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah. Okay, we have the acceptance of minutes and recommendations. It was moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan. That council accepts the minutes of the regular meeting of council held February the second, two thousand and sixteen. All in favor? Thank you. Reports of municipal officers and communications. Joanne, you want to speak to the...
Okay, this was a, a request that came in from the town of the northeastern Manitoula and Islands. They have a long-term health care facility in their community, and they're having a problem with the funding. They find that their, their expenses have increased, but the funding from the Ministry of Health hasn't increased along with the amount of their expenses. So they're putting a petition forward to the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care to take a look at the funding, and they're asking for support from the municipalities in Ontario.
Yeah, it's, you know, as the operators of a long-term care facility ourselves, we know the importance of the funding, and I think it's certainly appropriate that we support this resolution. And Counselor Mino, you wanted to add something?
Yeah, I, so I would support this. Also, just a note, too, like, a lot of the funding comes in one year later because they base it on last year's results. So just for that reason itself, they're not keeping up at all. So certainly, a message to the ministry would certainly be more than welcome here.
Yeah, there's certainly a... They, they rush us to get the information into them, but they don't fund according to the information that we send for that particular year. Maybe there's, there's a method with their madness here, I think. But I do have a resolution to, did you want to add anything?
They're actually two years behind, and they take data from two years ago, and that's what they fund us, although the data's based on the carrot that we have right now. And so everything that they put into this resolution is true and legitimate. It's a, it's a big need.
Yeah, sure is. So I do have a resolution I'll read. It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker. Whereas the council of the town of Kirkland Lake agrees with the town of northeastern Manitoula and the Islands in its assessment of the increasing expenses of operating a long-term care facility. And whereas increasing, increases in funding from the Ministry of Health and Long-Term Care have not kept pace with the actual rise in expenses. Now, therefore, our council supports the town of northeastern Manitoula and the Islands in its petition to the provincial government to increase funding for long-term care facilities. All in favor? Thank you. Mark, you were to come up to speak on the OSIF application-based funding?
So the first report I'm going to speak to is regards to our OSIF application-based funding. So we received approval for our application, ninety percent funding. This is for the road utility and grade reconstruction project continuing north from where we left off, Wood Street and Folger last year. So this is within drainage area two of the town, which is identified as a priority to work northward towards McCamus-McKelvey. Within that drainage area, to ensure the size of the storm system is large enough to accommodate that drainage area, and it will allow us to then start reconstructing in east-west direction on Poplar, Taylor, leading up to McCamus-McKelvey. So OSIF, this is application-based, one applicant, application per municipality per year. They fund roads, bridges, water and wastewater projects, up to a maximum of two million dollars. So in our design base, we look at maximizing the funding by going as far as we can within the, the allocated funds. So again, ninety percent funding to a maximum of one point nine six eight million. The town's portion would be approximately two-twenty, a portion of that out of water and the remainder out of, as directed by council, with a tax levy. There is also the option of the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund formula-based component, where the town receives dedicated funds annually, oh, a hundred, a hundred and two thousand dollars. So there, there's options for council to determine our ten percent portion. We do need to pass a bylaw to enter into the contribution agreement with the Ministry of Agricultural, Food and Rural Affairs that's coming up before March thirty-first. Any questions?
Counselor Roman.
Ninety percent funding, I'm just curious what the, what the actual limits are in this project.
Oh, construct...
I know we deviated Wood Street already from King.
Sorry, so the application is really, it's not really a continuation of Wood Street, but it's continuation north within the drainage area, drainage area D two in the town, so from Folger, where we left off, at the end of Folger, as the water sewer come around there to King, so we'd be going King, Comfort, Poplar, up to Taylor, through to Park and whatnot. So the, the construction limits, maximizing the, the dollars, we're looking right now by, hopefully to Taylor, with the construction that we'll end.
And is this including everything, like asphalt?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The funding has to be spent by the end of December twenty-seventeen, so we're including asphalt in this year as opposed to letting it sit for a year. That was a concern you had last year.
Yeah, typ, typically, you would let it sit for a year.
Because there's one application, you'd have to apply for additional funding past twenty-seventh, December twenty-seventeen to pave it, so this way it's all-inclusive.
Counselor Morgan. Counselor Mino.
Mark, back to the budget side of it, two-twenty to us total, a hundred and two from a source we already have. What would be the water component, just ballpark?
I don't know. I'd say about forty to fifty thousand.
Forty, fifty thousand. So we would have to put in our capital budget about eighty thousand or so, puberty.
Yeah, if you choose to use the formula-based funding portion of this and the other, that'd be the remaining portion.
Because the water side, we have to take it out of our water reserves, so that's, we don't have no move it on that, we have to respect that.
Yes.
So Mark, just, were we doing roadwork as well? Just so I understand, are we?
Yeah, sorry, it's, so grade and utility reconstruction, so it's sewer main, water main, storm systems within the area, brought up to grade sidewalks, asphalt, asphalt paving and curbs.
So we stopped at Folger, the project?
Yeah, so we went to, with the paving, went up to the intersection of King and Queen. The utilities ended at the end of Folger because they don't continue around that corner. Wood Street was reconstructed to, to the south limit of King Street in previous years. So Wood Street has been reconstructed right from the south end of St. Jerome's School up through the block past the, to Taylor. And so the utilities will follow through around Folger to King, Water Sanitary, and then the storm system to pick up all the drainage that will, that does flow to the end of Wood Street.
So King Street will see some reconstruction as well?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, okay, and that'll come back with a bylaw shortly? And Mark, you wanted to speak on the Bill seventy-three?
This report is for information purposes only, for council. On December third, twenty fifteen, the province of Ontario passed legislation to amend the Planning Act and Development Charges Act through the Smart Growth of Our Communities Act, Bill seventy-three. The purpose was to streamline land use planning and appeals process as well expand municipal revenue tools. So Ashley has written this report, and she has highlighted the changes. She's also attached the Bill seventy-three purposes. I can go through a couple of the highlights with it. In the Act, the Planning Advisory Committee is mandated to all municipalities. We've had some problems keeping members on that, so we had considered whether we needed it or not, but now it's a must. The official plan must contain procedures for informing and obtaining views from the public for various planning applications. One of the bigger ones is global appeals of an entire official plan are no longer permitted. They must be specific, and they have to be clear in their appeal letters as to which inconsistencies they are appealing. Notices of decision of all planning applications must now provide an explanation to the effect of any written or oral submissions on that decision. Planning applications can now be resolved through mediation, and there's time limits for that. And official plan updates take place ten years after the official plan is adopted as opposed to every five, but then every five years subsequently until a new official plan's adopted. Money's collected to accommodate increased density or cash in lieu of parkland must be dedicated and put into a separate account, must form part of our annual financial statement. Being that the town of Kirkland Lake going through the official plan, we have, we're, we actually have more parkland within our municipality than is required, so we've had cash in lieu for the town, but that's gone in with the regular sales, so now it's, needs to be separated and accounted for. We can add more tests to minor variances, applications through bylaw, so if we feel or council feels that there needs to be different things added to testing of minor variances, or how we make decisions, that can be done through bylaw. And all subdivision developments shall have regard for urban design. These, those are mainly the highlights, our planning staff will update their templates and to reflect any changes this bill has. If there's any questions?
Counselor Minow.
Mark, you mentioned here that the plan must contain information for the view of the public and all that. Do we have that in our, in our plan that's working right now? I think we do it.
Yes, we do.
So we're covered there?
Yeah, we're covered there. The, one of the ones that we have to work on would be just in the informing of the public of the, well, notices of decision of all planning applications, we'd have to provide explanations of the effect of anybody that had written a submission to that, so we'd have to respond specifically to those about our decision and how, what effect they had on our decision.
And do we still have to maintain a form of media communication via either newspaper or website? Is that still told to them?
Yeah, that's, still stays, yes.
And I think we have some objections already to our official plan, don't we?
Yeah, we have an appeal of our official plan that is, right now, a global appeal. We're trying to get that streamlined, but because it was, the appeal was registered before this had taken place, it potentially could stand as a global appeal.
Oh, so we don't have much to change on that? We'll have to deal with the whole thing?
Unless we get information back from their lawyer on the specifics.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mark. We have the reading and consideration of bylaws. It's moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan, that bylaw sixteen dash zero one seven being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute an agreement with the Ministry of Agricultural Food and Rural Affairs for funding the continuation of the Wood Street reconstruction. Be read a first, second, third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. And this next consideration for bylaw is for the, related to the sale of Laneway Abutting Government Road West to Janine Gaudori, which was talked about before. Was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, that bylaw sixteen dash zero one eight being a bylaw to authorize mayor and clerk to execute all documents related to the sale of Laneway Abutting Government Road West to Janine Gaudori, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Sir, any notices of motion? Counselor Minow.
This concerns the price of gas, obviously, that seems to be a concern, specifically for Kirkland Lake residents, and let me give you a scenario. I had a conversation with somebody, tells me that I'm going to go get my gas in Inghart, I'm going to keep going, I'm going to go shop in Liskert, and I'll come back and it will have cost me probably nothing for my gas, but you know what? I'll have had the pleasure of shopping out of town. That's, that's pretty concerning to me as a resident and as a councilor here, because also the person will not support the local establishments in terms of where they dispense gas. So the reason I'm bringing this up is because we are ten, twelve cents off from, as far as I know, Inghart anyways, and from Liskert. And for us, it has a tourism impact, it has an economic impact on the local shopping people, and also it just creates a bad mood and a bad sort of taste in your mouth as far as Kirkland Lake is concerned. So I'm worried about that for those social reasons and for the economic reasons as well. And I believe that we should be forwarding a motion, and I really don't know who it goes to, because I know we have a history of having made some in the past, which I don't know address specifically what I'm trying to say. I mean, the market will dictate the price, I get that, but the market also should not dictate that Kirkland Lake pays more than other communities. The perfect analogy was somebody told me that you can buy a Tim Hortons cup of coffee in Toronto for the same price you buy it in Kirkland Lake. So if that can be achieved, I think gas prices can be achieved. Mind you, I would see some transportation issues justifying it, but to the tune of ten, twelve cents a liter. I put eighty liters in my truck, that's eight, nine dollars. That'll cover me to go for a long ways, and you know, if people are reasoning it that way, they will act on that feeling, and we will lose in the end, because we will lose some support and we will have very irate people in town, and next thing you know, maybe one of the stations will close because of that competitiveness is just not there. And so a motion would be in order from this council anyways, that's my opinion, if you want to support it, that would be asking for fairness in that pricing marking, and whoever goes, I don't know, I think Joanne could help us in that. So hopefully we can bring this up in a subsequent meeting and then we'll have some support there.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Minow. Confirmation bylaw. It's moved by Counselor Barker and seconded by Counselor Morgan, that bylaw sixteen dash zero one nine being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held February the sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, be read a first, second, and third time enacted and passed. All in favor? Thank you. Counselors' reports. Counselor Minow.
On the subject of snow, I know it's almost compared to when we have that free pickup week of garbage. People put out their garbage two, three weeks ahead of time of those dates, and I'm beginning to drive around town and I see people, they know that the slashing of the banks is happening, and right now they're in federal today, and obviously it hasn't been done in Chapoos, for example. And obviously, my, my residents who complain to me are obviously from Chapoos, and they're saying that their visibility is quite reduced because people put it on the street and build pretty high mountains there. So, a couple things. If it's for the press to say, then hang on, guys, the trucks are coming, and they can only work so fast, as much as the crews that they have. And the other thing is, if our bylaw officer could actually drop in in some of these places and maybe just insist on the message of, it's not a question of the snow be gone, it's a question of visibility, and it's the danger thing. I drove by today, there's garbage pickup tomorrow, and there's already garbage there, so it compounds the problem by having garbage too, and so the cars are actually swerving now in some areas, and I'm thinking around the six hundreds, Mark. There's some, on Government Roads, that's Government Road on Chapoos there? The six hundreds in that area, there is some major, major bank there that's actually protruding onto the road. So either we can do something about it, if, I don't know if Mark requires a council support on this. I know you have standards and you have policies to follow, but maybe, like I said, two things. One of them is tell them to be patient, it's coming. The other thing is have the enforcement looked into.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Morgan.
Actually, I guess I've got a couple things. Norm just reminded me of one. Mark, on Government Road, on the bend there where it's really bad, did we not come to a final sort of decision on whether we were going to make one side of that non-parking in the wintertime, or did we not? There was some discussion about that, I can't remember.
So the similar thing that banks can make too far, we can temporarily burn signs on both sides. So at this point, the floor did both sides last week, should be a mountain there right now. Usually it moves snow from downtown for three or two poles, we walk the mains in certain areas, at one time we block, bridge from both sides.
And this is not a criticism of your department at all. In fact, I, quite the opposite, I think that your crew does an awesome job of snow removal, and I really fight back when I hear some of these offhanded comments that come out of people. But maybe downtown, on that corner, we just have to make all winter like no parking on one side, because it just, even the slightest bit of snow starts to make that corner just too narrow to navigate with the big trucks. So just food for thought going forward, but anyways, it's not a criticism, it's, your guys are doing a great job. And that leads me to my next comment, was Saturday night, I believe it was, water main break. I can't imagine a worse night for that to happen. And they, and they were there from what time, Mark? Like I saw them at eleven o'clock, they were just bringing in some of the heavy artillery around eleven? Yep.
Yeah, so they were investigating the rate at four P M.
Okay. Yeah. So if anybody, you know, feels the need to slag these people, take, swap jobs with them on Saturday night. I can't imagine what that was like. And the other thing was, I attended the Trillium announcement on, was it Saturday? Saturday? Are you going to speak to it, Tony, or? I'll let you speak to it, I've talked enough.
Yeah, and just to follow up what Counselor Morgan was saying, certainly our guys who are out there working, we're a small crew and they can't be everywhere at one time, and sometimes as councillors and as the mayor, we try to pull them from place to place and we realize that that just interferes with what you're trying to get done. If they're always running from place to place, they never seem to be able to do what they're scheduled to do, so I'm guilty of that and I apologize for that. I had the pleasure of, on last Thursday, of attending the, with the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee, the lighting of Yogi, and that lighting signifies the start of our winter carnival and eighteen days of fun-packed events for people of all ages, and that was certainly a pleasure, and our thanks go out to the Kirkland Lake Festivals Committee, and there's certainly their army of volunteers. As well on Saturday, Counselor Morgan and Counselor Barker attended a plaque presentation from Ontario Trillium Foundation, recognizing their contribution of eighty-five thousand dollars to our, to our museum, so that was certainly, we were very happy to receive that. And our member of provincial parliament, John Bantoff, was there to make the presentation on behalf of Trillium, so we certainly want to thank him for that. And we have our adjournment. It was moved by Counselor Morgan and seconded by Counselor Barker, that council adjourns its regular meeting of February the sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to an in-camera meeting to discuss one property leasing item. All in favor? Thank you. Yeah, yeah.